Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. If you would call the roll, please.
Demae, here.
Here.
DeBord. Christensen. Eric Salisbury.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. If you would, Jonathan, pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is our signed eye tax levy hearing. I need a motion to enter into our signed eye, open our tax levy.
Uh huh.
And do I have a second?
Aye.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll now open our tax levy hearing. I believe we need to take a roll call again, is that correct? Please.
Demae, here.
Here.
DeBord. Christensen.
Here.
Salisbury.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. Okay.
Okay. So, the tax levy is a key funding source for school districts in Illinois. And the tax levy is basically a formula, a function formula. What goes in is the EAV for your, um, your, your community. And then rates are applied by law to that. And there are some funding formulas that the school district can influence, such as money that is levied for the bonds, money that is levied for IMRF and social security, and money that is levied for tort liability. And so, every year, we take upon what the assessor predicts the EAV will be. In this case, we are getting preliminary numbers that EAV is likely to increase a little under eighteen percent in the community. So, we don't control the assessor. The increases that people will see on their property taxes if their EAV is not in our control. We apply the rates as required by law. And what we estimate are that we will need to levy in order to meet our requirements in IMRF, social security, tort liability, and bonds. And that, all that equals the rate. So, as the total amount of EAV in the community goes up, the rate goes down. There's an inverse relationship there, okay? So, our prediction is that our rate last year, four point five three seven two oh oh, will go down to four, four, six, five, seven, um, percent. And if we, uh, so what we're going to do is, what you always do is you ask for a little more than you think you're gonna get, because you don't ever want to leave money on the table. So, uh, in the, in the event that EAV goes up to twenty percent, say it's twenty-two percent, we can ask for what we predict it might happen, but you're never gonna get more than you're allowed by law. You're not gonna overpay, get overpaid in the levy. So, um, we believe that our rate will, um, be that four forty-six, uh, right around there. So, again, it doesn't, that, all that is calculated after the true levy comes in and the tax extension. So, basically, the long and the short of it is, EAV goes up, rate goes down. So, now people will see increases in their EAV and thus their property taxes, but that is not, you know, due to the school district's decision. It is a funding formula that is required by law. That's how districts are funded, as part of our overall formula. And so, um, that is the goal. Does, do you guys have any questions about the levy? Okay.
Any comments from visitors on the tax levy?
Okay.
Any comments for board members? No, okay. Do we just have the consideration approval?
Correct. One, two, and three are called abatement resolutions, because we have alternate revenue bonds. Alternate revenue bonds are bonds that are paid for by the one cent countywide sales tax. So, you don't levy for, um, the money needed to pay back those bonds. So, basically, these resolutions are to tell the county clerk, you don't need to, you don't need to levy for those. We pay for those via our one cent countywide sales tax. So, that's just, they're just words that mean, this is how we pay this bill. So, we would recommend to, um, approve these three bond resolutions. Transfer of countywide, number one, transfer of countywide sales tax for five hundred, eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars to pay general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source series 2018. Number two, bond resolution, transfer. Kendall King is here. He's the one who wrote these resolutions. Do I have to do them separate, or can we do them all together?
Uh, you could do them separately, except since you put, since you put them separately on the agenda, do them separately.
Okay, do them separately.
Yeah. Next year, I'll put them in one agenda, speed it up a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So Jeff can read them all off one at a time.
Okay. So, the first one is bond resolution, transfer of county sales tax money for five hundred and fourteen thousand to eight hundred dollars to pay general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source series 2018. Will need a motion to approve?
Uh huh.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Demae, aye.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried, six ayes. Number two is bond resolution, transfer of county sales tax money for one thousand nine hundred dollars to pay general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source series 2002, twenty-one A. And is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Uh huh.
And do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? There's no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Deb.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Demae.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. And three is bond resolution, transfer of county sales tax money for sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars to pay general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source series 2021 B. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Demae.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. And then do you want to talk about number four?
Um, so, yeah, pretty much the same as far as the tax levy goes. Um, levying, uh, the minimum dollar eighty-four in the ed rate, fifty cents in the building fund, um, thirty-one cents in the bond, twenty cents in transportation, twenty-five cents in IMRF, five cents in working cash, eighty-six cents rounded up in tort, five cents in fire safety, five cents in lease, special ed, um, four cents or, and thirty-one cents in the social security for the total rate there. That's what we predict. Those are the rates. And then, but if we, if we can capture more dollars in EAV, then those variable rates will go down. The fixed rates will always stay the same, the variables go down. So, that makes sense. The other thing I need to talk to you about is a new thing this year. As part of the levy is what's called a, um, annual average expenditures to combine cash reserve balance. And the superintendent is required to report to the board if you have two and a half years of fund balances accrued in your accounts. You have to report that if you do, which we do not. So, you have to report on the ed fund, operation and maintenance, transportation fund. Your, if you have two and a half times your average three-year balance, uh, or expenditures. And we do not have two and a half times more money than we need. No worries there, we're good. We don't have two and a half times more money than we need. So, we have to require to tell you that and file it with the state. Because some districts have so much money that they have not spent it, and they're required to basically then say that they're spending their money, so that they're not obviously overtaxing the public. But we don't have that problem, so, we're good. Other than that, those are the two items I need to tell you about.
And you need approval of the tax levy?
Correct.
Okay, number four is 2024 tax levy. Do we have a motion to approve?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
Demae.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. Mr. King, anything that you want to add or enlighten us?
Um, uh, there's actually an action for a new bond as well later on down, so I'll probably talk before that action.
Okay.
Great. I'll try to speed things up for you.
And is there a motion to end our signed eye tax levy hearing and go back into our regular meeting?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, second, all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we're now back in our regular meeting. I don't believe we have to do roll again. No, I'm pretty sure we don't. So, we have invited guests, Mr. Duarte is here tonight.
Bring Alex up and Coach Taylor. With this resolution, whereas Kiwanee High School has a long and rich tradition of athletic, uh, athletic achievements, and whereas Alex Duarte has distinguished himself by his fine performance on and off the football field, bringing honor to himself and his family, and recognition to Kiwanee High School and the whole city of Kiwanee. And whereas Alex Duarte was unanimously selected to the Three Rivers Conference All-Conference First Team for his achievements as running back and linebacker, and additionally selected as a Three Rivers Conference Defensive Player of the Year. And whereas Alex Duarte has set or tied the following Kiwanee High School all-time records during his high school career. Set yards gained in a season, fourteen fifty-five. Tied on two occasions, the most rushing touchdowns in a game, five. Set rushing touchdowns in season, twenty-one. Set rushing touchdowns career, thirty-seven. Set all-time points season, one hundred and forty-six. Set the all-time points career, two hundred and fifty. And whereas Alex Duarte was selected to the 2024 Illinois High School Football Coaches Association Class 4A First Team All-State as running back and linebacker. And whereas Alex Duarte was most importantly honored as a 2024 All-State and All-Conference Academic Award winner due to his classroom excellence. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Education and Kiwanee Community Unit, School District 229, Kiwanee, Illinois. Alex Duarte, Coach Matt Taylor, along with all of his assistant coaches at Kiwanee High School, are congratulated on their outstanding achievements and success. And copies of this resolution be presented to Alex, his coaches, and the school.
Okay, now scoot over there in between Lori and Ron and turn around so I can see you. Yes.
Moving.
Photo ops. Photo ops. Are you getting that? Got a camera shy. Nice, good job.
Okay, moving on, item six, consideration of minutes. Item seven, consideration of financial and treasures reports. And item eight, consideration of bills and payroll. Those could be considered under consent agenda unless someone wants any item removed. Is there a motion to consider six, seven, and eight under consent agenda? And is there a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Stefan.
Aye.
Demae.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. This time, any comments from the audience? Anyone care to make a comment? Hearing, hearing none, we'll move on to the Board of Administration. Mr. King.
Okay. Um, so, first of all, discussion of evidence-based funding and school funding. So, right now, you've probably seen in the news or heard that the state of Illinois is three point one six billion dollars, uh, behind in their budget for FY26. So, um, now we have superintendent hair on fire, panic button. Because historically in the state of Illinois, when the state needs to, um, you know, make budgetary cuts, they come after the school. We've experienced this through prorated funding, prorated mandated categorical funding, that is funded correct, you know, to its full, um, capacity that schools need. We've seen it through pension holidays. So, I would like to believe that under the current legislation, they will not do that to us again. I've been in the room with now five different, uh, individuals who work in legislation and government. I went to the town hall meeting with Senator, um, Anderson, thank you, and State Representative Travis Weaver. And I stood up and asked, you know, about school funding, here to pension, et cetera. I also was in the room with ISB's representative for rural schools at a superintendent's meeting this past week. And I hear, I've heard some people say from EBF, well, um, some politicians will say, oh, we care about EBF, of course, we're gonna continue to support it, but they're not giving dollar amounts. They just say, we support. So, I don't know what that means. No one's giving any dollars yet. Then I was in the room with the lady from the rural schools who predicted that EBF would not get new money. And you know that the EBF formula is supposed to hold the school district harmless, and then the state is supposed to increase the funding pot, so to speak, uh, every year in order to increase schools adequacy targets. We are seventy point five percent funded to adequacy. So, that means if, if Santa was gonna bring a hundred presents, instead he brings seventy point five presents. Okay? So, um, now, the state's supposed to give you the ninety percent, or seventy point five percent. Our district cannot afford to skip evidence-based funding, uh, new money. We're, we are, you know, our budgets, our predictions are predicated on the expectation of the state upholding its promise. So, um, we are looking into a very murky crystal ball right now, not knowing what's gonna happen with EBF, and no one is saying what's gonna happen. So, every time I can get in the room with anybody who will know or be in the know, it's like an information worker, it's like back to COVID-19, where everybody's jockeying for information, well, what did you hear? What did you hear? And that's the way superintendents are right now. So, um, there's a little, you know, red panic button somewhere, that we're all just slapping it. So, basically, we're trying to really, uh, you know, advocate for the school districts, advocate for ourselves, advocate for the need for the state to honor its obligations and promises to us. So, we're hoping that that will happen. So, I wanted to give you an update. If you see, you know, the back signal coming from above, that's because, you know, we're concerned about what's happening here with the evidence-based funding. Number two, I guess I should say, number one, do you guys have any questions? It's supposed to be discussion, so do you have any questions on EBF? You know what EBF is. The question is just, is it, is it gonna, are they gonna put any money into it or not? So, and if they don't, what's that gonna do to us? Well, that's gonna be determined by a whole picture of things, you know? But Dan and I are keeping a, uh, very close monitoring of it. Uh, number two is Press Policy 116. So, Press Policy was the, um, we did a first reading of those. We, we determined as a board, or not to adopt Press Policy 116. Those were based on the new Title IX changes out of the Biden administration. So, um, again, I went to the ISB policy session at Triple I. I was in the room with the people that write the policy. And I said, I raised my hand at the end and say, what are you doing about 116? And everybody got real quiet. And the recommendation was, or the prediction was, that the rules are not gonna be enforced by December 30th, that we will see changes. So, basically, the superintendent groups are basically saying, we're not adopting 116, because all those rules are gonna change after January anyway. So, my recommendation is leave 116 alone and see what happens as changes come down the pipe and in January, February.
January 20th.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. So, you know, we all took a wait-and-see approach, and that's just really no difference. Um, discussion of digital scoreboard and advertising. I have gotten two emails regarding, uh, you know, businesses interested in corporate sponsorship. I was, I just said this is a board decision, it's covered in board policy. We discussed it last, uh, um, month. And at this time, I don't have a recommendation, because I didn't want to put any pressure on the kids learning to use it. You know, we wanted to learn how to do it before we start selling, you know, off this stuff, that we don't know how to do it yet. It seems to me like we're having a rapid learning curve, as with any kid in the, you know, digital natives who seem to learn things pretty fast, you know? So, I know Mr. Fromberg, J.C. Hinton, Aliyah Duarte, whose brother was here just a minute ago. I think they're spot on with, uh, learning how to do things. Now we're figuring out how to get scores up, and so I didn't want to start selling things off before we even knew, you know, how that was gonna look into a whole picture. So, I don't have any recommendations for you, unless you tell me that you wanna, want me to get going on it. It's up to you guys how fast you want to proceed with that.
We'll be opening up the can of worms by selling advertisement on that for the people that, that give us services that we don't pay for. Thing, and, I mean, are they gonna get, are they all of a sudden gonna wanna go, hey, how come I'm not up on that board? Or?
Bring out my competition in.
Yeah.
I think we have to be pretty clear about what our policies are and give everybody a fair chance to get in on it, if that's what we want. But the, the board has to kind of decide what, how they want, how you guys want that to be utilized. Is it, is it, you're just selling them all like yearbook ads? You know, as many as you can get, tiny little squares? Or are you gonna do larger premier sponsorships for people who have relationships with us? You know, Great Dane is doing these corporate, you know, sponsorships for us. We have signage, we have good furniture, we have named spaces, you know?
We have reed gloves.
We have reed gloves, yeah. So, right, so it's kind of up to you, how, what direction you want to go.
I think that's an area where we want to be kind of careful and take some time.
Yep, that's why I didn't have any recommendations to start setting prices and start, you know?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in a hurry to do that.
I agree, okay. If, if anybody, you know, at this time, we, we, I'd rather go slow to make a good, good, solid decisions where, and I, I didn't think it would be probably during this basketball season, given that it's December, you know, and, uh, we want the kids to have a chance. I, I want them to be creating content, not just a, a stream of ads. You know, we want the kids to have the chance. It's for them, so, that's why.
I think it's great, uh, the other night at the game, that they, you could see them improving
Yes.
each week.
Yes.
On what they're putting in there. And I thought, man, when we go like with the egg manglets and the band, and we start putting that stuff up, we can pack that gym.
Yep.
Just, you know, that's like going to the movies with a big gym.
Yeah, it is, right? It really is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sky's the limit, so, I agree with you. Number four, winter break cleaning and maintenance projects. You'll be surprised how little time there really is during this break, because Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are during the week, and New Year's Eve and New Year's Day are during the week. So, that's four, you know, workdays basically already on vacation. And so, and then we have a various, you know, scattered vacations. And so, um, we're really focusing in on one main project at the high school, which is to paint the stage black. So, the stage has a shiny finish on it, like you would a hardwood, like a gym floor. And it produces a shine that bounces the light up and washes out and causes problems. And so, after begging and cajoling by the theater world, you know, I said, okay. We worked with, we worked with JR, he worked with Sherman Williams and the flooring guy, and said, all right, if you use this special paint, this is the procedure, this is how you're gonna do it. So, we have a small crew of expert people that are just gonna tackle it and baby it over break to, uh, and either way to look nicer. And I believe it will just kind of, it's really not had any attention to it, that stage floor, and since 2001 when I came here. So, uh, it's probably time to do something to it. And so, uh, they can be happy about that. Goodfellas baskets, um, maintenance department helps set up all of that this week. And starting today, basically, the Steamer Gym, isn't that right? We turn it into...
Took care of it before lunch.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's, it's a box city in there. And the kids really work all week long with volunteer hours to do the boxes. And then Friday, on a film, and then Friday's deliveries. So, appreciated, it's a big community effort. My predictions, that I was told, were a thousand boxes. I'm not sure where we landed with that, but that was the prediction, that we give away a thousand boxes. Had a cost of about forty thousand dollars. Not to us, obviously, but to the Goodfellas. So, we appreciate that effort. Uh, winter programs and concerts, we've had a packed schedule. Irving concert, Bell Alexander had their concert, Central had a concert tonight.
That's why I was late, I apologize.
The high school had a concert, their mosaic on Wednesday. So, and we have one more tomorrow.
Tomorrow's our fourth grade musical.
Fourth grade musical. So, everybody's... And to your point about packing the gym, Irving tried something new this year and put the Irving concert in the gym. And I'd say it was a packed gym. And the kids used, they faced the Jumbotron, and then words were on the Jumbotron. Yeah. And then the music was piped through the whole gym. So, you know, um, that was a new thing to try, and Abell said he was okay with it, believe it or not. So, it was good. Uh, all fire requests were taken care of. Actually, I don't think we've had any this time. Um, and then, number eight, just to let you know again, that the reason for the countywide sales tax, 2024 projects, uh, the way we use the countywide sales tax money to report on that is bond payments, the K, on the KHS, and the KHS Field House of Locker Room project. So, most of the money goes to the bond payments, and then there's usually a little leftover that goes to, remember, that has to be used in capital and improvements. So, that was a capital improvement. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Abell?
On your handout, you can see the postseason for this winter sports. Majority of this just came out this afternoon. Boys' basketball, regional, will either be going to Mercer County or McComb. Girls' basketball, regional, will either go to Knoxville or Orion. Wrestling has not come out yet. Competitive dance, the sectional will be at Mohammed. Girls' bowling, uh, just so you know, I was about ready to predict where we were gonna go again, and I would have been two for two, I would have been wrong. I thought we would go to Dixon, but we are going to go to Wharton for regionals on February 8. Speech, regionals will be at Mohammed, uh, Mohammed Roosevelt. Group interpretation, the sectional has not been posted yet, but state will be at Richard Tice School over in the suburbs. Scholastic Bowl has not been posted yet. Music, solo ensemble, uh, we will go to Mama. And music organization, we will host that again. And, uh, just so you know, we are the defending state champions.
We are.
So, we're excited about that. So we're excited about that.
Thank you. We have no superintendent meeting reports. We'll move on to item 12, unfinished business.
Okay, KHS fan room retractable wall. So the Brockham Gym just continues to get better and better every day. The retractable wall that was original to the facility in 1956 was replaced. And the, the track and the walls and the sweeps and the soffit, everything was done, but it looked like a big brown cardboard box. And so we worked with a company to get a wrap installed. And so now when you see it, it says home of the Boiler makers, Q1 High School Boiler makers. So it is really neat looking. And we did get a, now, you never hardly see this, it's all a change order to deduce, to deduct from the bill because the company made a mistake, which should not have ever been brown. Those walls were supposed to be white. And so because they made a mistake, they reduced our bill so we could apply that credit to the wrap. So the wrap only cost us a little over $2,000 more than the credit we got back. So it actually was a happy little mistake, I guess. Yes, thank you, I think. Atwell and the team did a great job of getting that set up in the drawings. And I was like, looks better than I hoped for, so.
That's the IT department.
IT department, okay. KHS and Central roofs, I continue to work with our insurance investor, Paul Vander Heid, to proceed with the claim. I also reached out to a, another architecture firm that works solely on roofs. And I've sent all the information to have a private roof evaluation done. So the, in the event that we end up in a three-way tie of whose responsibility is it, we have a roof evaluation of our own to throw at, throw in the ring and stand up against Primarji Solar Roof Evaluation and the insurance evaluation. So I appreciate Jeff's contact there at III to get that going. I did send a follow-up email just to see the status of that, and I hadn't heard back yet. So I'm not, that was yesterday, so I'm not expecting a, 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 a turnaround on their emails. But I have been, I've been seeking out more information about the original contract with Primarji and the Clean Energy Design Group. I asked to see their insurance certificates. I've asked two times, September 5th, and also just last, last week, keep prompting, and no one's returning any of my emails. So I am unsure as to why, in our contract, it states that they were to have an insurance certificate, and I can't find it. So now Kevin Yepsen said he would try to put some pressure on them to see if they could produce the insurance certificate. And he cautions us against, Kevin's advice was to caution us against winning the battle but losing the war. So we may even win the battle on the roof, but lose the war in energy, and it could potentially affect us in energy credits, thinking that our energy bills may go up because if Primarji, you know, pulls out of this contract now because of all this.
How much are they, have they been saving us over the years?
So, in your packet.
About $79,000 left.
So Kevin did a little analysis from some data that he was given by Dan. And yes, it's about 79, 79,214.84 supply, that's a predicted supply savings. If you were to buy it from the grid versus the Irving's supply cost, I sent him some more figures because these numbers that are in your packet are from October 2022 to September 2023. And I just kind of wanted to fact-check that again. So he said he would look at it again if I gave him a few more pieces of information. And he's been very helpful in this advice because I didn't know anything about this until I was, you know, thrown in the deep end with energy credits. Okay, so how this all works, so.
So is Primarji the company that's going to put the solar panels up at Bel, on the 2.96, 2 acres?
No, that's a whole different group. That's the, that's the B O W, yeah. And so that.
So, so what, well, if we lose the war, as you say, win the battle, what's the energy cost to them?
What will the energy cost us?
I mean, what, how would we lose the war?
Because basically, okay, a couple different things could happen. I mean, and this is all dependent on how this big battle goes out in, in the, between the insurance company and Primarji. Our lawyer said to me, you're the, we are the victim, right? It's not our job to hash it out between these two entities, basically. You know, we protect our own interests, hence the private roof evaluation. Now, the opinion is, let's say that we win, and the Primarji owes us $1,500,000 or whatever dollar amount they, they decide to settle upon, which I assume will come to a settlement of some kind in the end. Then Primarji says, well, we can't pay you that, so we're going to haul off all of our solar stuff, sell it.
You can't get rid of what they got on.
I know, ironic, isn't it?
Yeah. Come get it.
Right, so then we have to buy our energy off the open market again, or off the grid, so to speak, at a higher rate per unit. And so, you know, we may get our money for our roof, but then increase our energy costs.
But you would also have opportunity, another company come in and put.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The, I think the game, the name of the game, and I'm so new to it, so somebody pipe in if you've got some information here. But the name of the game seems to be when you can lock in the rate. I'm going to buy it at this much per credit, and if I get locked in for X amount of years, then I get a good price versus I come along later and now the credits have increased. Does that how you interpret this kind of?
We get the credit from the power company, Amher, if you will, right? They pay us for the power that we're putting into the system.
Well, so far from what I can understand, and what I mean by credit is like how much money per unit of energy.
That we put into the grid.
And then we have a supply.
Right, you make, you make your electricity, and then when the sun goes down, then we're pulling off that bank.
I guess so.
That's what I understand.
That's the way I understand it too, but, so. I've been asking more questions about how this whole thing works. So I just want them to give me some money for the roof. And so I, I, when I talked to Adam Lerner when, when they were still answering my calls, I said, you know, it's not my goal to ruin our relationship. It's not my goal to say, you know, take your bat and ball to go home. I just want them to put us back to where we were when we started.
Make us whole.
Yeah, make it, make me whole, put me back to where I was when I started. But now no one's answering my emails, so I don't know where was I when I started because no one will give me the original roof evaluation, the certificate of insurance, you know. So, you know, we're just about the way of applying some pressure to them.
I would think we're already doing damage to our relationship with, well, we're not doing damage, they are. They're doing damage to the relationship between the two entities here.
And I'd be, I'd be happy to hear what they have to say, but, you know.
Well, they won't be forthcoming.
Seems a little interesting to me that, you know.
Because we're already losing money.
Right, so I'm basically, I'm basically working now with the insurance. You know, I, I kind of like, it's hitting a brick wall over here, so I'm turning my attention to working with Paul to supply him with the information he needs so that he can turn this into a claim against, you know, how are they going to proceed with the claim? So that's kind of the long and the short of it is. Just keep working on it every week a little bit more, you know.
I just don't see any downfall of losing the war. Yeah. I don't see any.
There's plenty of companies out there.
There's other companies.
It could take two or three years to settle it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wouldn't be surprised if, if it winds up in some type of arbitration or media.
Oh, I haven't thought that of it.
And then, and a judge is going to say, well, there's three of you, split three ways.
But it's costing us money every day, and we're not getting use out of the solar panels.
Well, so I stood right there, Q1 has gone and looked at the big master switch, you know, and JR told me, when that switch is up, yeah, that's why I'm a little off. It's on, and the switch was up, so the system is active. It is sucking power, it's making energy. Now, there's no little meter to tell me, you know, how many credits versus, I have no idea, you know.
Well, they've, they've got attachments to, they go in five panels or 15 panels, and they'll tell you, they'll break that grid down up there to tell you if they're making power or not.
Well, the switch is on.
I can't, I can't remember what they call them. But you can plug them in up there, and that tells you what's happening with those solar panels.
In my mind, that was their job to get the system back to making, producing power after the damage. Like it was trashed up there, you saw the pictures. So if we don't maintain those, they're supposed to bring, send their people out to fix it, to put it back into working order, the big panel on, off, you know. So whatever it is or isn't producing is their fault, not ours, because, you know.
I agree.
Anyway, so the switch is on. School maintenance grant, I did talk to the architect last week and told the architect that our school maintenance grant was approved. Thank you to Heather for getting that all submitted. That is $50,000 to go toward the life safety amendment, which is for the, it's called an ERV, which is like a fresh air exchange at the top of Peterson Auditorium. So it has, it'll have to be bid now, and it's a mechanical unit that gets attached to your existing HVAC, is the way I understand it. But it was part of our life safety amendment, and it was something we had to fix. So it worked out great that we were able to use school maintenance for part, part of that money. The estimate is $120,000, so, because you have to pick a project that's over $100,000, so it's a matching grant, so hopefully that'll work. D is just consideration and approval of new and revised policies. Sorry, skip ahead there, Jeff, but all that is just clerical things, nothing too interesting. So we can approve those.
Okay. Recommendation is to approve that list of new and revised policies. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. And then E is consideration approval of policy 4102.
4102 is our, is our risk management plan. And that is the policy that gives you the authority to spend toward money that you levy for on these particular things. The only, we did a first reading last month. The, the only recommendation that we changed was to include some nurses' salary in the, in the risk management. That was it, so nothing too extreme, just a little clerical cleanup on that. And you really should review them once a year, you review your risk management plan because that, again, gives you your authority to spend toward, so recommended approve 4102.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to new business.
Okay, so we have a bus bid. We had only one bidder, Central State's Bus Sales, for the bus, for nine gas buses. The other bid came in for diesel buses. And I seriously considered if we wanted to reject all bids and go to diesel to switch over, talked to a lot of people about it, pros, cons, pros, cons. But for the, for the maintenance and the cold weather, the recommendation is to stay with gas buses. So the recommendation would be to approve the bid for $876,490 with Central State's Bus Sales.
Oh, were there conditions that correct?
I believe that is what Dan included in the bid request.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. And moving on, consideration approval of a resolution providing for the issue of 5,000, or 510,000 taxable general obligations school bond, Series 2025, purchase of increasing the working cash fund of the district, provided for the levy of the district annual tax, sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Sounds good, so I'm Kendall King with King's Financial. I appreciate the chance to be here tonight. So we're a small municipal advising firm out of Monticello, Illinois. Very much thankful for being able to see you guys here. I thought it was interesting to hear your, your retribution of your, your football player was, was cool to hear. So Monticello, we actually made it to state this year, which was very exciting. I went, I went to Lexington a couple weeks ago and got to see us, a single public school get crushed by about 40 or 50 points by every single.
Public school, yeah.
By every single private school. You had 1A, Leo Winslow got slaughtered by Belville Althoff, who had a running back who's going to work in next year. 2A, you had Marilla Forsyth got beat, Monticello is 3A, and we got beat pretty, pretty handily by. So, but anyways, and the reason that's interesting too is our football coach, we've had pretty good football at Monticello for a number of years because we, we stole a coach from up in this area. Coley Welter was head coach at Alito for a number of years before that merger became Mercer County. And we poached him, he came down to Monticello, he's now our head football coach. And he had a couple of state titles up at Alito when he was there. And since he's come to Monticello, he took the same group of kids that were 0 and 90, the year before he got there, he took them to the playoffs the next year, and they've never missed the playoffs since. And, and we've been to state twice now since he's come down there. So he's definitely made a big difference for us at Monticello. But anyways, we're not here to talk about football, we're here to talk about bonds. So what you have here in front of you report, 510,000 taxable general obligations school bonds. We are recommending moving forward to the sale in the form of a self-purchase, where the district buys this with its own education fund. The advantage of doing it this way is that you collect the full amount of interest. So rather than the interest going to a bank or an outside investor, all of the interest will come back within house to the district. So that number is 66,500, which is going to be, you know, coming back in, earned or retained throughout the life of the issue. The disadvantage of doing a self-purchase, you don't get the money upfront, it's spread out and comes in over time. And so we felt like this is an opportunity to be able to do that, especially with interest rates quite a bit higher now than when they were a couple years ago during COVID times. You can earn quite a bit of interest at over 5% as a fair and substantial amount that you can pick up and earn yourself by doing the self-purchase. The goal for the overall property tax levy, and you just heard during the tax levy hearing, that the plan is to, you know, not increase the property tax rate, but instead you're actually decreasing the rate, I believe it was about 7 cents was the goal, coming down off the property tax rate. So the goal with the new bond is really just to capture the extra EAV growth, but not increase the tax rate. And that was the way we set up the structure, was to be able to accomplish that. Total expense load of 2% on the issue. The second page shows the existing bonds of the district after the sale. So there's a Series 2023 working cash bond, and then this will be a Series 2025 working cash bond. We layered the payment on top and spread it over four years, so you can see the addition to the levy. But again, with the increase in EAV, we expect that by adding this additional payment, it won't really increase your tax rate at all, it'll just be spread out among the rest of your funds and keep the tax rate actually going down with the EAV increase. The last page shows the existing alternate revenue bonds. All of these bonds are paid through your 1% county school facility sales tax. So that's why there were three action items on the agenda for tonight to abate those. Those are required by law to be abated every single year and paid through another source, so you want to make sure you're doing those abatements. We've had districts that have forgotten those in the past, and that's not a good situation. It impacts your credit rating, so you want to make sure you're doing your abatements every single year, obviously, and that's why we had them on the agenda. But you've got three series outstanding of alternate revenue bonds. You've got the Series 2018, the 2021A, and the 2021B. You also have a debt certificate, the Series 2022, and the Green. You also have a debt certificate, the Series twenty twenty-two, and the green. All of those fit together and all of those come out of the one percent sales tax proceeds. Any questions for me about the bond issue? So as far as process, we started off with the resolution of intent two months ago. We came back and did the public hearing last month. And then tonight, we have the sale resolution on the agenda, which is the last step that the board will have to take to complete the sale. I have a very large stack of documents that need to be signed here by president, secretary, and treasurer after the meeting. Any questions, Serene?
I just want to say I really appreciate your help, leading the, the green one here and not to be, you know, green, because that's your color. But the newbie here through the bond, uh, structure and the bond experience. And appreciate you coming out and talking with me and Dan and being here tonight. So you, you know, you guys are the real deal now, you know, the big time. Thanks for coming out to the little people and doing this for us. Appreciate it.
Really appreciate the chance to work with you guys and hopefully we can continue that relationship for many years to come.
Thank you.
And the recommendation is to approve, correct?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Okay, C is consideration approval of Central and Nponset eighth grade promotion date. Wednesday, May twenty-first at seven P M. Formality?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Salisbury?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. D is consideration approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar. That's in your, your packet.
We, just for some, you know, context there, worked with the calendar committee, which is representative of, representatives, myself and teachers and the union to come up with, you know, the proposed calendar. And Connie worked on this, submitted it through the process. And Izzy, we wanted to get these dates out a little ahead of time so people could, you know, start, when they see their families and start talking about, hey, you know, what the, what the plans. It really is important when we're planning professional development at the beginning of the year, because when we're talking about contracts and schedules, we really need to know the dates, you know. So we, it looks like we're going to be, August eleven, twenty-five would be teacher workshop. So we're keeping the same structure of three days before school as our three full institute days. And then the last day, teacher institute would be five twenty, twenty twenty-six. If you can believe it, we're talking about that far in advance, but. So.
Graduation would probably be on eighteenth.
Right. The first thing I did was pulmonary rhinitis. Before we pushed this over to, through committee, I said, are you happy with these dates? So.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. And E is consideration approval of the resolution in support of Illinois Vision twenty thirty.
So in your packet, there's a document called Vision twenty thirty. This is the blue state of Illinois on it. And it's a recommendation from the Illinois Association of School Administrators that is joint with the ISVE, Illinois State Board of Education, to basically have boards say that they support the IASA's Vision twenty thirty. This is the, what guides the work of the superintendents and the state leadership as far as how they're going to advocate in legislate, legislatures. How are they going to advocate for what they see as priorities? So this resolution is like two pages. But basically says, Illinois Vision twenty thirty, whereas public education plays a defining role in ensuring equal opportunity for children in Illinois throughout the United States, and whereas it is our collective duty to ensure that every student, regardless of demographic or geographic identity, has equal access to quality public education, and whereas we believe that strides need to be proactively made to face challenges and continually improve our public education system, and whereas there have been three areas of prioritization identified as integral in improving our public education system, future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding. Predictable funding, I'll just mention that. Whereas future-focused learning should address promoting future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, enhancing students' safety and well-being, attracting and retaining high-quality and diverse educator pipeline, and promoting curriculum and instructional flexibility to meet the unique needs of local communities. And whereas shared accountability should address reforming the Illinois assessment system to be a timely and useful measure of student proficiency and growth over time, reforming the current accountability system to provide local flexibility for identifying indicators that create a more holistic view of student success, and reforming the mandate process to ensure implementation procedures that promote flexibility in local decision-making, less mandates. Whereas predictable funding should address protecting the integrity and funding of evidence-based funding formula, strengthening public education through pension reform, and establishing equitable funding sources for capital and safety needs. Capital funds. And whereas it is imperative that any education improvement proposal for comprehensive change must be developed and supported not only by the education community, but in collaboration with families, communities, businesses, and other groups of priorities reflect the best interests of the students. So my recommendation would be now, therefore be it resolved that the Kiwanee Community Unit School District two-two-nine Board of Education joins with the Illinois Association of School Administrators, IASA, Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, Illinois Principals Association, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents of Schools, Superintendents Commission for the Study of Demographics and Diversity, Illinois Alliance of Special Education Administrators, and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools in supporting the Vision twenty thirty education improvement policy. And be it further resolved that the Kiwanee Community Unit School District two-two-nine Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations under the three pillars of education improvement as contained in the Vision twenty thirty policy adopted today. I would like for us to approve that, if that's okay. I read it all.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Still move.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Nothing really controversial in there?
No, please, please give us money.
We have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. F is consideration approval of First Amendment to option to solar energy lease and easement agreement.
Okay, so this is the Bell Alexander Solar Project through the B O W. Also then the Aspen Power Development Company, Aspen. This is a project that was started, you know, a while ago. The recommendation is to move from a twenty-five-year option to a forty-year option. So basically, these rates that you can, you know, lock in at, get, and the agreement to lease, to be paid two thousand dollars a year, it's two thousand, right? Goes from twenty-five years to forty years. Dr. Solins and I have been talking about this. He's talked with Chris and Mike Massey, and they both, and Kevin Yepsen basically are like, this is a good opportunity, jump on it to get the forty-year extension. I will be eighty-seven, so I hate to tell you, but in forty years, you can do whatever you want with this whole panel. So we're already into it for twenty-five years. It was fine with me to go to forty years. Didn't really make that much difference to me, but it seems like we're locking in something that can then benefit us over time. So I said, okay, I will recommend it to you.
Does there offer to provide a scholarship and annual increases? That's all included to the forty years?
I believe that's extended up to the forty. That was the whole, you know, goal, is to keep it going. Yes. So I was, I called up my friend who was an H R manager for a coal mine, and she's an H R professional in, in Indiana. And I was telling her all about the woes of having this base funding. She said, you gotta find ways to make money that's not dependent on state taxes. And I, and I was like, oh, I guess we better get some solar money, so.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? This one's not going on the roll.
No, this is a ground installation. Yes.
If there's no discussion, call the roll, please.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Last item under new business, G, consideration approval of application for bus-to-grid program.
Okay, now, I have been talking with Tim Parkour, who is a superintendent of Mercer County. And in our region, he's probably considered one of the lead guys in clean energy and is a big advocate for alternate energy. He is applying for a bus-to-grid, and he will group for people to get the bus-to-grid electric buses. Basically, this is a, and, and in your packet, it says, this form is non-binding. This is the key words, non-binding. Basically, you apply to see if you can get some money for a electric bus prop project. If you don't get it, you don't get it. If you do get it, that doesn't mean you're going to get it. That means you at least have the option to decide to get it. I think we're a couple of years away from real practical, you know. As you know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step. We've been working on the Bell Solar Project now for, you know, two years. So if we work on a, a electric bus, by the time we get through, whatever changes are coming down the pipe in the global energy market, then maybe it'll be time. So I just decided it was a, something for you guys to think about. It doesn't hurt us if we sign this paper and we say, throw our hat in the ring. You guys can decide later how practical it is if we get the award. But it doesn't hurt to try, was my opinion. And Tim's a nice guy, was very kind to me and said, you know, he'd help us with this process. And I was like, hey, okay, so.
So no real commitment to?
Non-binding form. It, the form does not permit either party to proceed with the project. So it's just an inquiry, basically a, a V P A funding, so.
Is one of the electric bus manufacturers?
Yeah, yes.
Closed down a couple, a couple of weeks ago.
And that's the major one for Illinois.
Right.
Does one of those have an electric bus?
They, they applied for, I don't think they've received it yet, because again.
I think theirs are coming from Lion, which is the company in Joliet that closed up.
Right.
So that might change things.
Yeah, so, you know, if this is going to be a race to see who gets in line, you know, then.
There's just a lot of things to think about with those things.
I know. That's why I would only recommend it, because it's non-binding and just an inquiry, you know.
Legally, you couldn't even drive that bus on Nponset Township Road. They're too heavy.
Interesting.
Nponset has a twenty-eight thousand pound limit during the summer. And these things weigh up around thirty-six thousand pounds.
Wow.
That's good.
Yeah, that's a good enough.
The replacement battery's fifty thousand dollars.
Well, if someone would care to make a motion to approve that application for bus-to-grid program?
Some.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to action from closed session. We have some resignations.
Okay, sorry. All right, resignation. Recommendation to approve, resignation, A.J. Cook, Central Junior High Track Coach. He's going to move on to the high school, a high school position per track. Brian Sanchez, bus driver, effective twelve-three, twenty-four. Mark Stromberg, elementary boys' basketball, effective eleven, twenty-five, twenty-four. Steve Couple, KHS, part-time, nine-month custodian, effective twelve, thirteen, twenty-four.
Any further recommendations? Is there a motion to approve those resignations?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Call the roll, please.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. We have no retirements. We have some hires.
Recommendation is to approve Paul Lindstrom, KHSPE teacher for second semester. Tess Anderson, elementary teacher for twenty-five, twenty-six, grade level to determine. She's doing a teacher vacancy program at third grade with major leave right now. So just to extend to her a contract for next year. Corey Tavares says, second semester, this is the job he already has. KHS, like coordinator substitute teacher, long-term, for second semester. Frank Schwindlein, medical leave substitute teacher for approximately four weeks, one twenty-six for Kelly Jackson at Bell. Frank Schwindlein for maternity leave, effective four thirty for the remainder of the school year for Liz Murphy at Bell Nponset. Lauren Nolan, medical leave substitute teacher, twelve-eleven to twenty-four, to one twenty-two, twenty-five for Jill Bartel at Central. Christine Gussison is replacing Gracie Dameron, who moved to a different position, Bell, part-time aide. Joan Porter, district-wide kitchen substitute. Jasmine Torres, KHS kitchen substitute dishwasher. Mike Meyer, elementary boys' basketball coach.
Any further recommendations? Is there a motion to approve those hires?
Still move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. We have leaves.
Recommendation to approve Liz Murphy maternity leave, starting four thirty, approximately twenty-five to the end of the school year. Kelly Jackson, medical leave, one twenty-six, twenty-five for approximately four weeks. Jill Bartel, medical leave, twelve-eleven, twenty-four to one, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen? Demae?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Long-term subs.
Yep, recommendation to continue Ariel Byerly, second semester as KHS English teacher, and Usavia Guintero, continue with Irving, third grade, for second semester.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Some.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Transfers?
Recommendation to, to transfer Rebecca Johnson from full-time KHS cafeteria worker to part-time bus aide, effective one-six, twenty-five. And recommendation to approve Joe Servanas from five days a week to three days a week as KHS resource officer, effective one-six, twenty-five.
Someone make a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Steffen?
Aye.
Demae?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. Volunteers?
Recommendation is to approve Marcus Thronberg, volunteer elementary boys basketball coach, Tom Meyer, elementary, volunteer elementary boys basketball coach, Jake Say, volunteer KHS track coach, AJ Cook, volunteer KHS speech.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second?[1566.01]